Welcome everyone, today is 11/17/2020, this is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The first order of business gentlemen is we have Ms. Kelly Koska, Principal Assessor, the Town of Acushnet for our real estate classification hearing. In accordance with Chapter 369 of the Acts of 1982, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the issue of allocating the local property tax among the following residential, open space, commercial, industrial, personal property. Ms. Koska, I will turn the meeting over to you. I know you have a presentation for the Board of Selectmen and for the public to view, so.
I do.
You all ready to go? We're ready to listen.
Awesome. Hello, everybody. Okay, this screen which says fiscal 2021 levy limit and ceiling. It's basically what we go through each year. We catapult off the levy base from fiscal 2020, which was $18,027,438. Then Proposition 2 and 1/2 allows the 2.5% increase of the $450,686. FY21 new growth that was approved was $734,390. I just want to make a little comment on that. The Town of Acushnet normally averages for new growth around the $300,000 figure. The increase this year is because of the net book value worth of the utility companies for personal property where it was a significant increase on how they valued themselves, I think because of interventions through the DOR, as well as new solar farm hitting the tax rolls, as well as growth in an industrial property in town, PJ Keating, which obviously had, it's been contentious, but they've had some growth in respect to their value. Then the debt exclusion, which I believe is comprised of the police station and the remaining debt of the school renovation, where the levy that we're dealing with for FY21 to collect from taxation is $19,658,581. Now, as I advance, this is basically just a comparison. If you look at each property type and each class code, if you look across, unfortunately, I don't know how to swing my screen further to the right, but it basically shows you the difference of value between each year and the increase of value between each year. So let's start with, obviously, single-family homes with the residential category, which values the town at the higher percentage. You see, single families increased $26 million roughly, that first line. We don't have condos. Then we had an increase of the miscellaneous, which is mobile homes or in the miscellaneous category, which kind of everything gets dumped in, that doesn't have a classifier. We have the 1.2 million increase, 130s, which is new land or subdivisions by 3.5, and so forth. What I was talking about in reference to industrial, personal, industrial, the 4442 category, you see that 2.3 million, that's roughly because of the increased real estate. Actually, another contributory factor was Wing Lane, they're going to open up that second side soon. So instead of getting taxed residentially on the land, it's an industrial tax, so obviously changes the value for the expansion of the solar farm there. Then, as we continue to go down, if you see the biggest figure, about 2/3 down, you have that $23,651,389, public utilities, as I talked about, that's Eversource. That is a net book value that is not determined locally, but rather by the utility company itself, and they send us their information. And as I had mentioned, the Department of Revenue has been working very diligently with these companies where they felt that they were losing value and growth in prior years. So value went up quite significantly on the personal property associated with the public utility companies, AKA Eversource or Hopkinton LNG in our case. So basically, as I advance, I sent all this to Lisa to, so you can look at the PowerPoint presentation, if you want to reflect back on anything, or I can scroll up or down. But basically, the easiest option to explain and to understand is, if we pick a single rate, the value of the town is $1,348,728,282. And the levy we need to collect from taxation is $19,658,581. You divide them, and then you get the number times 1,000. So as in the worksheet that I provided, the $14.58 per thousand dollar value would be the single rate that we would try to get certified through the Department of Revenue if we did not do the allocation of tax levy burden. Historically, the Town of Acushnet, over the past seven years, the Board of Selectmen have opted to do the 25% shift of taking the burden off the residential tax class and putting it on the commercial, industrial, personal property. This is just a little bit of an explanation, again, just like I went over, 150% is the highest shift we can go, basically without going for more specific. I think it would even involve town meeting if we have to go higher, but that would only be usually under very special circumstances where we'd have to find sources to get money and meet the levy, and it would come from the tax shift, if you will, or putting more burden on the other class than residential if there was that much of a big gap. We've never gone this route historically, it was just a little FYI that I wanted to add. So, the tax shift possibilities, here on this grid, you see, as you go across, the percent of value, which if you look across, is, well, if you add that all up, it would be 100%. So, basically, if we picked no shift, the levy of the $19,000, 17.4 million and change would be the residential category, commercial $492,000, industrial $422,000, personal property $1.3 million, with again, reiterating that number of the $14.58 per thousand. Obviously, it's self-explanatory, as you go down, the residential factor or percentage, let's deal with the number that we normally have historically looked at, which is the 1.25, which the residential category would be 85% of carry, 85% of the burden, commercial 3.13, industrial 2.69, personal property 8.3, and then levy amounts, the $16,615,363, 528,718, and then 1.6 million, leaving the tax rate at a presumed 14.11 per thousand and 18.22.
22, Kelly.
22 per thousand. So that's what, I'm just reverting back to 25 because it looks like the pattern has been the 25% for the past seven fiscal years. And the little note at the bottom is, are you looking at from comparison to '20 to '21, an increase in the residential class of 17 cents per thousand dollar value, and the CIP class 27 cents per thousand dollar of value? That's all I have for visuals.
Kelly, can I ask a question?
You may.
On the, the first thing that kind of stumped out to me was the new growth number. It's very large, it's seven, you talked about at the beginning, the $734,000 number. And I was like, I know that we've experienced some, you know, housing development and things of that nature, but again, as you alluded to earlier, our new growth is usually 250 to 300,000 a year. That number just really bounced out to me. So on that new growth number, do you know what amount of that new growth number derives from solar farms, the new solar farms that were, then over the last year? Because I know you're talking about Eversource and the other industrial property, but what number of that free?
I don't have the tax dollar, but I can give you the relative assessed value of what would contribute to that number. And then you can do the computation. So for that question, PJ Keating contributed in value increase for the town, $2,509,800. N-Star and Hopkinton LNG through the personal property categories contributed roughly about, summing them all up, about $21 million of value extra this year. Solar Farm, the new one, Kearsage, on 588 Middle Road, in personal property, and so what they have there, it's a 7.5, I believe, megawatt facility, $2.4 million of value. And then, what I had talked about, the other side of Wing Lane, just looking at the real estate, which would be the industrial, industrial land, $290,200. So if you sum up all those numbers, that value has really driven the difference of what we normally get, which is around the $300,000 range, to the $734,390 that we got certified this year. I'm looking at it from the perspective of value, Kevin, of course, because that's how, that's how it initiates, and then it pulls forward. So the tax rate last year, last year's numbers was $17.95 per thousand. So on roughly about $23 million, times the tax rate of the $17.95, that's your new growth difference, probably, of what you're looking at for that larger number.
I'm sorry, can you say that again to me?
So if you, in other words, the numbers I just threw out, which would be, I'm going to round, I'm not going to make specific numbers. So 4.5 million, 1 million, 16.1 million, and 2.4 million. So I said, I ballparked about $25 million, 24 million, times the tax rate of the $17.95 divided by 1,000, that would be your allocation of new growth just from those categories not being residential, which is where we normally get our growth from. Just wait one minute, I could actually tell you exactly that number.
So I did, I did the solar farm, I guess I'm doing the solar farm right, Kelly. You said 2.4 million, and then 290,000 for the land off of Wing Lane, and I come up with, would it be feasible to save $48,285 is from, out of that? Out of that new, that new growth number of $734,390, would it come off the top to go to the solar capital revenue fund?
I believe it would. I didn't even get that far, but I believe your numbers are correct. The big driver for value, again, I'm not looking at taxes for value, is definitely the Hopkinton LNG and utilities of the 16.1 million.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're still roughly 680 then, right? That's a huge chunk of money. That's like.
Yes, sir.
Above.
It's a one-shot deal, as you know, new growth. But I think for the future, with what the Department of Revenue has been talking about, is they're really trying to make these utility companies accountable for their actual value and not a net book value. So when they, historically, they give us the value, we don't go out there and try to assess it based on our methodology. So what they came up with.
So with this new, I guess it's continuous new revenue, revalue?
Yeah, because obviously, we catapult off the $19.6 million for FY22.
Yeah. So if, I understand the tax shift thing, but it just, I think this, for this, the purpose of this meeting, it's going to get a little convoluted now because of the long, there's a big change in our revenue stream, right? It's really driven by the industrial properties, Kelly, so.
Personal property.
Yeah.
Or the personal property, associated with industrial.
Yep.
Yes.
So I guess I would ask the question is, without going too crazy, is there any way, if you're going to capture all of that new growth in that revaluation of those properties, is there any way to drive down the residential side so that we can lower residential side of property taxes, or is that asking too much?
That would all be contributory, again, when you look at the dynamics of what the recap is, normally, we run at about $34 million, like last year we did. And roughly, we are at the 50% mark, 50% from taxation, the other 50% from other revenue sources. This year, the balance is a little off, where because we have a $19.6 million levy, about 16 million is other revenue sources, and the 19.6 is being used as the allowable levy. So I don't know the dynamics of how it gets approved, I know how the number is derived at, and it all basically comes in together and it's all interactive in the whole scope of things for the recap. So your question, I'm going to say is, no, it doesn't come off, the levy base is strictly taxes. You can't, you can't take the maximum allowable levy and decrease it and put it on the other sources of revenues, in my opinion. I don't know, Julie might know a little bit more, but that's my, that's my understanding of it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I guess good for us, right? We raised more revenue. We need to be careful how we budget that revenue, especially the solar revenue, we'll have to do that back out, the accounting department will do that when we do the budget process, but I know you're sure they can't just spend it all.
And just so you know, because of that number, for abatements and exemptions for overlay, our overlay speculation for FY21 is to the tune of, I think, almost $900,000, where for the projection for the budget was only 250. So those monies do stay in town, in the town coffers, it'll be an overlay surplus.
Yeah, yeah, I understand how that dynamic works. Gentlemen, I don't know if you have any questions right now for Ms. Koska while I gather some thoughts here?
At this time, I don't. And from what I've heard tonight, I don't see much, much idea of breaking from ranks, as we've done in the last seven years, and keeping the levy as established.
I agree with that. Kelly, I'm just trying to recall, maybe you just talked about it because I was writing notes down. Within the, the commercial rate, are there various tiers versus like heavy industrial, small business, or that's just a one size?
We don't have a small business exemption, no we don't. And the allocation of levy is on this right here. So if you look across on the 1.25, let's use that for the example, the commercial amount out of that $17.6 million levy would be 615,363, the industrial 528,718. Personal property would have the 1.6 million. So personal property is definitely, as Kevin has mentioned, the big driver this year because of that net book value on the utilities, the distribution of levy.
Can you just tell me a little bit, maybe, you know, we can do it offline, obviously, we're not going to do it today, but I just, I'd like to explore that small business exemption, maybe for future years, just to get around that, because if, you know, if there was ever a way to do something to reapportion the obligation, you know, you've got some heavy industries like LNG, you know, the LNG facility, PJ Keating, and if we were able to go in that direction and help some of the small businesses, the mom and pops, I'd be inclined to do that, you know?
Absolutely. Actually, if you have access to Gateway, which I believe you do, you can actually plug in numbers. There's a program that's there, software that will give you the scenarios of whatever percentage small business exemption you're looking to do. So definitely, we can discuss that, not an issue.
I mean, at 1.25, we're still one of the lowest in the area for business. Is that correct, or am I?
That is correct.
I can't answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't look at surrounding communities, to be honest with you.
Yeah, Selectmen DeRoche, I did, to answer your question, the demographics anyway, I just did Acushnet, New Beaufort, you know, this demographic, Freetown, Fairhaven, Rochester being Plymouth County. Rochester does have a flat tax, it's 1348, much smaller community than ours, half the size, with lesser school than we have. They're K through 6, we're K through 12, but Fairhaven's a 1.75 split. New Beaufort's 1.73, which I think is just, as Kelly would say, a rounding error. Freetown is 1.43, and we're 1.25, and our tax rate is extremely favorable if anybody's looking to do business in this demographic area. So it's interesting, Kelly, what you brought, bringing to the table, I think that's something for our board with Ms. Hebert in the account, how we're going to address this revenue and look at this for the bigger picture moving forward. And unfortunately, we are in a Zoom meeting, we don't have a lot of time to be trying to go back and forth with all of this stuff, but very interesting. As always, you always do a great job putting together your numbers. You know, it's basically down to the same thing. I mean, if you leave the rate alone from '20 to '21, and you leave it at the 125 split, and don't put any more burden on the residential taxpayers, which is 88% of the class, you're looking at about an increase of $53.60, which is a 1.1% increase. And if you do the same for the commercial properties, you're looking at an increase of $85, which is roughly $31 difference, and it's equally a 1.1% increase. So the distribution is pretty much equal between residential and commercial on that increase, which is pretty insignificant. I mean, 80, 85 bucks for a business to be able to write that off versus a homeowner that can't, or a homeowner that doesn't have a job. You know, I think it warrants, Ms. Koska, probably more dialogue with you and your board and your office to try to see how we can go around doing this. And Selectmen Wonau brought up that small business exemption. I like that, I like that idea. So I think that we can go on, as you said, the gateway, DLS gateway, that playing around with these numbers and see, see what we can come up with. Unfortunately, we're only given this opportunity once a year, is that correct?
That is correct. I don't believe a small business exemption could be actually used this year. I believe it might have to go to town meeting. Don't quote me, I'm not sure. But for future years, definitely. I believe, since we are basically right at the 11th hour, when it's coming to certify the tax rate, it would be taken off the table for this year.
Right.
Yeah.
Thinking was like, if we went, if we came up with, if we went up on the commercial, you know, the split on the commercial side, provided the small business exemption, and then lowered the residential, that might be in the formula. And so that's something, you know, if we can put a sticky note, reminder to ourselves to work on that, and maybe that's something we target for the spring town meeting, so then we're ready to roll next year.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea. It definitely brings a lot to the equation now that these properties have been, and I was going to mention that, Kelly, Mr. Wonau just kind of hit on that because it was kind of one of these things that we've been talking about for, I don't know, the board has been throwing it around for like a year or two, is can we, in the CIP, I know it's commercial, industrial, and personal property, are we allowed to create an industrial tax rate, like so that you would have a three-tier tax rate?
I am unaware of that. I'm going to lean towards no. I've never seen that, but you never know. I cannot answer that completely yes or no.
All right.
I'm leaning towards no.
Yep, but that's all right. Mr. Wonau's got some, some ideas there, and I think Ms. Hebert, I can't see her on the Zoom meeting, but I'm sure she's listening in. So it's something for us to be exploring sooner rather than later, if we are going to have that discussion through the budget season. I'll surely, I'm open ears, and I like to hear some more ideas, creative ideas on that. Mr. DeRoche, anything?
I know, I've listened, and I've made my comments, and I'm okay where we stand right now.
Selectmen Wonau, anything else for Ms. Koska?
Good, thank you, Kelly. Good, good seeing you.
Yep.
Gentlemen, we need a motion though, to set the tax split rate. So is there a motion to leave the tax split rate at 1.25?
So moved. Second, I'll second that.
All those in favor to leave the tax split at 1.25?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Koska.
Okay, have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. And I don't know, gentlemen, if we need a motion to close that public hearing, but I'll make that motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are back in regular session of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and we have Ms. Flynn on the old business, Ms. Flynn, Kristen Flynn, the school business managers. I know she's got some info for the board to look at as far as a school budget update, which I think might be the first time I've ever seen that. And also some kids discussion. Hi, Ms. Flynn, how are you?
Hello, thank you for inviting me. So just quickly go over some updates for the school department, but first I want to thank you all and everyone who attended a town meeting for approving our roof article, certainly very needed, and we're excited to get that project started, and also our curriculum article. So I believe, I know I've come before you the past couple of months to talk about what we are spending on the town, our allotment of the town cares fund, so I've been trying to keep you updated. So I'll just quickly go over what's new since I last saw you in October. I think I did submit the worksheets that I've been doing, so hopefully you have them. So some of the, most of the things that we've purchased since we last talked have to do with a lot of technology to be able to do our hybrid classrooms, and also our remote, and also modifications to the nurses' offices, those, that's part of Department of Ed regulations for isolation rooms in case a student or a staff does exhibit symptoms during the school day. And we also purchased some more air purifiers and some more masks and hand sanitizer. So the biggest purchases, like I said, were some more Chromebooks. We're still awaiting delivery on the biggest bulk of them, but we were able to get 30 more Chromebooks and able to use some of the, use more older ones now and distribute those out to the students. So we're able to do that, so that's coming. We did have some more, purchased some more air purifier, so I would say, almost if not all of our occupied spaces in both schools have an air purifier, and we also bought replacement filters. So we prioritized it with rooms without a window, rooms with no window, up to rooms with many windows. So whatever rooms had, was lacking, so to speak, in ventilation, we prioritize those for the air purifiers. But just about every space, if not all occupied spaces, should have an air purifier by now. We also have done some upgrading for our technology, for our network switch, because of all the increased demand on our network for Chromebooks and remote learning. Now, as you know, students are in person two days a week, and they're learning at home three days a week, so they need to connect in and take part in their classrooms. So that's about the bulk of our latest purchases. I don't know if you all have any questions on those before we move into the budget?
Kristen, the 196,000, the bottom line number here, it looks like expenditures year to date, well, to date, is that out of the 350 that the Board of Selectmen that pre-approved that 350? That was like, I know we did like round one, round two, it's like a boxing match, you know, and here we are going, I mean, I think we're still in round two, but the Board of Selectmen had approved, I think it was like 350 or 300 to allocate it to the school?
Yes. So that's what we've purchased since you had approved that 350.
Okay.
There were some expenditures, I guess you would call them in round one, that were made back in, in June and May and June, that, it's my understanding, don't count toward that 350. So, so we're working on, off of that, but this is what, in my understanding is, we've purchased toward that 350. So we're not, we haven't, you know, gotten close to that 350 yet. We do have some more work that's being done on our HVAC system. So on the first page, the third line down where you see advanced air, that's going to increase that, that figure that we're still having work done on our HVAC system. And so there may be.
What line?
So on page one, the first page.
Oh.
Dated 8/3, advanced air, and I just, that's where I've been tracking all of our expenditures for our HVAC system. Those have been happening over the course of several months. But rather than having one line for every single, you know, invoice, it's all there.
Ms. Chet, Kristen, have they given us any estimate of what the total's going to be, or is this still a work in progress?
It's still a work in progress, but I'd say we're getting to the end of it. I wouldn't anticipate much, much more. We're just waiting for some invoices to catch up, quite honestly. So that's, you know, that's what we've spent so far, about almost $197,000. And I know there's a deadline, I believe, of 12:30. So that's why I wanted to come to you today as well, is just to let you know, here's where we're at. I've reached out to all, some of our department heads, facilities, and technology, just to come to me and Dr. Bailey with any more, you know, anticipated expenditures between now and then. But I wanted to, you know, let you know that that's where we're at, in case there was some other needs in the town that, you know, if we wanted to reallocate some of that. I wouldn't want, you know, to say, reserve all this money, only not to have. I wouldn't want, you know, to to say reserve all this money, only not to have spent it when it might have been able to be used otherwise.
Yeah, I think we, I think we have a little buffer off on the sideline, Ms. Hebert. Julie, while while we have Kristen talking about the CARES Act money, I I didn't ask Kristen this, and I know she's in constant contact with our high schools. And we do have some money left over. Would we be able to, let's use an example of, because I know every town's got it. But with Old Colony being a regional school, is there any way that we would be able to reach out to Old Colony or is it an allowable expenditure if we contacted Old Colony? I think it's, I know I'm a little late at the game to to bring this up, but we got a couple of a month and a half left and maybe because we have a large percentage of our students going to Old Colony and it being a regional school, maybe reach out to them or could you look into it to see if there's an approve, if we could approve expenditures, if they needed anything?
Yeah, I'm I'm fairly positive that we can, you know, use our money and and help assist them. But I'll find out more details on it and let you know.
Yeah, can you do that sooner rather than later? Because I know the timeline is running out. And as Ms. Flynn just said, I think the deadline is twelve-thirty. But if 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 we feel that, you know, we're going to have some the money left over and it's from the state through some grant funding and things of that nature, if we can help that school out and provide some cash to them if they need any kind of supplies, COVID-related, obviously. If the board so chooses, we could try to help them out. It's recovering some of their costs as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Okay, any other questions on the the CARES expenditures or anything to do with our, you know, COVID nineteen expenditures at all?
I do not.
Okay. All right. So next you have a budget update. And so this is something that I prepared for to and presented at school committee meetings for every month for the past several years. And I have admittedly not so much last year, but in years past, I had been sending it to Mr. Noble, the town administrator. So I thought it would be a good idea to share this once I presented it to the school committee out to to you all. So I'll just explain the report really briefly. What I start to do at the beginning of the year like now is take our larger budget lines, like salaries, tuitions, transportation and just compare where we're at as of right now, actual to budget. So as we go along in the year, I'll start to put in our utilities, see where we're at with that. And then just try to come to, this is my way of trying to come to see where we're going to land in June. So as you can see, as of right now, there is a rather large surplus that's anticipated for June. Things change really quickly in the school department. Tuitions can affect it so so quickly. So, you know, I'm not going to say that this is where we're going to land up in June, certainly not. But it's a good indication, you know, where we're at right now. So you can see the our majority of our surplus is coming from transportation right now and out of district tuition and salaries. We have a couple of unfilled positions. We have not hired a principal at the elementary school. We have an acting principal, who is our assistant principal. So we haven't filled, we're missing an administrator there. On my list here, I have, we have an unfilled school nurse position, but we just hired a school nurse as of today. So that, next time you see this, that will change. And we also had a resignation in our ELL, English Language Learner Teacher Position. And because we have very few English Language Learners in the district this year, we have not filled that position. It's probably going to be a contracted out position for what little needs we need. So we've got some unfilled positions that are contributing to the surplus. We also have, you know, I'm predicting a deficit in preschool and that's because we rely on preschool tuition to fund two positions, a teacher, a portion of a teacher and a para. And because we've had to have our preschool class, all of our classes smaller, we're not taking as much revenue. So that has to hit the local budget because we won't be able to tap preschool revolving. So that should be indicated there. Of course, we have some other things due to COVID. A lot of our stipends have been either prorated or done away with. Unfortunately, we can't have a lot of our after-school programs. So, you know, back in January, February, those were budgeted for, of course, because we didn't know that the pandemic was going to even coming or affect us. So that's that's the biggest change there. Now, you also see some deficits from salaries because of the positions that we've hired for. And I know we've talked about that at past meetings. We have building-based subs that are working in the buildings every day. So instead of relying on daily subs, which we still do have to to some extent, we knew that we needed to make sure due to potential increased absences, we would need to have, you know, people in the buildings every day. And we've also hired about a two-point-three FTE additional custodians. And they're also doing some overtime. They do some deep cleaning on Saturdays. And we're also have some overtime during the week to accomplish the excess cleaning that needs to be done. You'll see I offset it from our, this, the town, not the towns, but the school department, CBRF grant, that's a Department of Ed grant. So we're using those funds to offset these salaries for from now until December thirtieth only. Because as just like the town cares, December thirtieth is what we need to stop at for those funds. So you see, that's why there's a deficit, because those those positions are planned for the year. We will need them throughout the course of the pandemic. So that is offsetting some of our salary surplus. Next line down is high school tuition. Bristol Aggie, the way that they do their the tuitioning now, it's based on the previous year's attendance. So we always know in February exactly what we're going to owe for Bristol Aggie tuition come the next year. So there's no more predicting who's going where. We, it's based on the previous year. So that's why we budgeted for ten students and that's what we were built for. Fairhaven High School, we received their first invoice. We get billed three times a year. And it looks like after that first invoice, there are nine less students attending Fairhaven High than we budgeted for. So you'll see the surplus there. I haven't received the New Bedford High School tuition invoice yet. So hopefully the next time I come to speak to you, I'll have that filled in for you. School choice tuition, that is, that comes out from the Department of Ed in December. So I'll have a better idea after that as to what we will owe versus what we budgeted for school choice. The next line down is that remote tuition, the TECA tuition. Currently, we have eighty-five students attending as of right now. As of the billing time, we had one hundred and three students, but we, since I sent this off to you, we've disputed that and they've billed us only for eighty-five. So you're going to see a little bit less of a deficit there because of that, those, the figures. So we will have, if we do continue with TECA at that eighty-five students for second semester, that will be a deficit there because we only can use the grant to offset first semester. Okay? But we don't know if we'll have any students changing their minds or coming back in January. So that number is going to change. The next two is out of district tuition and transportation. Those are the big surpluses. And a lot of it is due to, we have four students who, back in February, April, March, when we were budgeting, we budgeted for out-of-district placements and either they're being homeschooled, they're remote, or they've returned to an in-district placement. So whatever the reason, they're no longer in those costly out-of-district placements. So you can see I've kind of, you know, categorized what where the surplus is coming from. The biggest one is students budgeted for but not attending, and that's four and a half students. That half is like a summer placement and some other. And then you can see we prepaid an additional tuition amount at at the end of the year. Also, transportation, if we have less students, if students aren't going to a placement, they don't need to be transported. So there's a large surplus there in out-of-district transportation. You'll also see that we're no longer transporting to preschool. So we had budgeted about seventy-four thousand for that and we didn't, we're not transporting to our preschool this year. And it's also a shoring school year. A lot of these placements are not going on Wednesdays or they started ten days later as as the state allowed. Collaboratives operate inside public schools. So if the public school started ten days late, as we did, then the collaboratives would have too. So some, that's all factoring into the transportation surplus. You can see we had, you know, students who are choosing remote learning, students who return to industry learning. And then the final line is the McKinney Vento, and that's we budget for homeless transportation. And as of right now, we we're not incurring any cost for any homeless transportation. That's there as a placeholder. You can also see the next line down is a deficit due to COVID for in-district transportation. That would be to a person at elementary, Ford Middle School or any of our high schools. We've had to add decals on the buses for seat numbers because all students have assigned seats that are their seats every day and that helps us in contact tracing in case, you know, we're aware of a student that has been exposed or potentially tested positive. We can figure out who's right next to them on the bus. So we had to add some decals. And also, as part of their reopening plan, Fairhaven High School added an earlier dismissal. So that's affecting us because now where our drivers used to, you know, report for work in the afternoon for a two o'clock dismissal, they're now reporting for a one o'clock dismissal. But our dismissals are still just as late. So it's an additional driver hour for those Fairhaven buses. Okay? And we're covering some of that through our CBRF grant. And then you can see where I put down that final line is the other costs due to COVID. And you're going to see our ESER grant expenditures, which is an offset. That's another grant we have, the CBRF that I've talked about. And finally, any of the expenditures submitted for town cares that, you know, at this point, we don't know, you know, how much is going to be reimbursed because it's my understanding that it may or may not be dollar for dollar. So I've got that in there as showing as a deficit. But of course, any reimbursement will decrease that. So, you know, this is a really rough draft. A lot of things are going to change between now and the end of the year, more so, of course, than any other year. But at least it gives us an idea that we're we're doing, we're doing okay right now, you know. So we're not predicting deficits, which is, which is good, like overall deficits.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Kristen, if you had to, you know, margin of error and for those watching, what what do you, what would you think would be the best case scenario from an anticipated surplus to, you know, a dollar standpoint?
Sure. Um, it's tough to tell this right now. With our salaries, we've looked at all the salaries, you know, so that I'm fairly certain of. Unless, you know, all of a sudden we leave, someone leaves and we have to replace them at a higher salary or a lower salary. That one's pretty, that one's pretty good. High school tuition right now, you know, that's where some margin of error might be because we don't, we don't have that New Bedford High School invoice. More students going to New Bedford High. So once I get that, but if it's trending towards our other tuitions, that may be an additional surplus, you know, with more students not attending traditional school. TECA, that's a big question mark because we are currently sending out surveys to our families to find out what their continued intentions are, whether they want to continue with the hybrid program, whether they want to continue with a remote program, because there's an opportunity to change in in January. So
Do you have a number like bottom, like the, what do you think a bottom-line surplus number would be?
Um, I I
For everything all
To say, right. So I would say it's not going to be, I think it's going to be more than what we're used to, quite honestly, because of those tuition figures. I can't real, I mean, I wish I could tell you right now, Dave, but there's just too many unknowns with, you know, with with, say, for example, our bus transportation. You know, that that changes because if if schools go remote, right, some of these out-of-district placements, we're not going to be paying.
No, I understand that. And I won't hold you, but I just think it's, I think it'd be good for us idea of what what you think the number
Right. So as of right now, I'm predicting about four hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Okay, fair.
You know, what can change is utilities. Fuel oil, things like that.
As long as you're not in deficit mode.
Correct.
That's what's more concerning.
Exactly. So
And I think anything here is is gravy, you know?
Right, exactly. So, I mean, it could go up and down. For example, last year, we had a very expensive out-of-district placement that occurred midway through the year. That was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar swing. But then we subsequently found out that we were getting additional reimbursement from the state. So that kind of negated it. So it's really, you know, there's a lot of volatile lines and, you know, it's it's tough to, it's not that easy to land a fourteen million dollar budget when you're dealing with a lot of different
All these are variables. But I I'd say this, though, Kristen, I think this level of communication and collaboration is incredible and I really, I really appreciate it. And, you know, I think from now until June, you know, we'll keep looking at that four hundred and seventy-one number and also communicate with the finance committee. I think if there was ever a time for us to make sure that the the school department gets the resources it needs, it's now. And I think this this type of communication goes a long way to achieving that.
No, I'm happy to do it. Always happen.
Thank you, Kristen. Great work. And I I second what Mr. Won had just said. We really appreciate this budget update. Says a lot about the school business administration and your level of communication, keeping that open transparency, not only to the Board of Selectmen, but to our general public. It's a great exercise. Don't need to do it every month, but it'd be great to see you in a few months.
In the meantime, we do this at our school committee meetings every month. So, you know, the pub, the public is welcome to tune into those meetings as well because it's basically the same information.
Yeah, great. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right. Next, we have Bia Chief. He's, I guess that's him with a mask on. Chief Gallagher, welcome. You want to give us some COVID testing update?
I do, Mr. Chairman. It's your lucky day because I got to be quick for once. We've got well over a hundred and fifty people in line already. We've probably serviced seventy-five. This is the biggest turnout we've had yet for community testing.
Excellent.
So we are at seventeen hundred nasal swab tests before today. We're catching people who don't know that they have COVID. They're doing the right thing, staying in. And I think our efforts, the town's efforts, the whole team is slowing the spread. But I wanted to ask the board for their permission to kind of expand this for Thanksgiving. We want people to stay home.
It looks like
Last Sarah Mo.
I think Chief got frozen. Chief? Well, if we lost him, we can bring him back in. I hate to do that to the chief. I don't know how to unfreeze somebody while they're frozen on Zoom.
I know. If if you want, Mr. Chair, I can kind of take over because I know what he's he's going to ask you.
Sure.
Just to fill in the gaps. Chief Gallagher is looking to have another round of testing the day before Thanksgiving. You know, obviously anticipating that, we're hoping people stay home and, you know, do the right thing and and try to stop the spread. But knowing that some people may be visiting with larger groups than they normally would, we're we're hoping to do another round of testing the day before Thanksgiving, which would be Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. And the chief, the chief has been able to, oh, here, he's been able to get the rapid response nasal tests. So what they're looking to do is to give those tests, which will give anybody who takes the test an idea that they're positive currently. I know it's a little bit different from the antibody test that says that you have the antibodies or not. This would be a rapid positive test. It would be a fifteen-minute test. And talking to the chief, they'd be looking to try to maneuver people so that they're not waiting the fifteen minutes by filling out the form, leaving a contact number. And once the test results come back, they'll be contacting people if they're positive. That's the only hard part when you have those rapid response tests. They're fifteen minutes, but we don't want people congregating and it can kind of cause a little bit of mayhem. So the thought process was a best contact number is provided on the form and the group will contact anyone who has a positive. And finding out that you're positive the day before Thanksgiving is a huge bonus. If there is anyone who's positive and asymptomatic, at least that way we can prevent them from going to visit all their family and and spreading the virus more, especially where, you know, the states put a lot out. The numbers are increasing. And I know the the concern about Thanksgiving leads into Christmas because there are four, four-week because there are four, four week buildup periods. Where, you know, when people congregate and kind of spread, you usually don't see the boom for another four weeks. And that obviously takes us to Christmas, which no one wants to see, Christmas fall apart too. So this is the, an idea that the chief has come up with. And, and he's looking for support from the selectmen to have this day before Thanksgiving. It would be from one to seven at the schools. And it would be the rapid test.
Yep. It looks like he's got a little bit written here exactly, Miss Hebert. So for our public, on a day before, Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, Fire EMS staff will be in the school parking lot because the schools are closing for half a day. It says here that they'll be testing, thinking of rapid testing day starting from one PM and ending at seven PM. So if there's anybody interested in our general public, in the residents of Akushnet, they want to be tested the day before, they can go to the school. As they, most people are there now. There's a lot of people there now, but that's where we do our testing for the public. It can be done from one PM to seven PM, Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, if you want to feel safe before you have family members come over. I think that's really leaning towards the, we, I think people are finding there's these asymmetric people that don't realize that they have the virus and they become super spreaders once they bring in their families. So if you want to have Thanksgiving with a good conscience and you don't want to worry about you being a super spreader, feel free to go out there and get tested. And it's nice to, the rapid responses. And I think it's important to note because I've, I've talked to some residents over our, our testing. If you are not positive, you will not hear back from the town. The only way you hear back from the town, just like a doctor's office, is if you are tested positive. I know a lot of people call me and they, hey, I've been waiting three days. Well, if you haven't heard anything in three days, you don't have COVID-19. That's the good news. So hopefully people will show up and do what they need to do and have a, you know, the safe holiday. Miss Hebert, you don't have anything else? I know Mr. Gallagher's gonzo, so.
I think he was just looking for a vote of approval from the selectmen that you're okay with him having that kind of community rapid response.
Yep, that's fine. Is there a motion? I, we're just looking for an approval. Guys want to make a motion to approve the rapid testing on Wednesday from one to seven PM for the chief and the Fire EMS personnel?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll be there.
All right.
Who wants to spread COVID at Thanksgiving?
If I can add just to, well, well, you know, this is a good way, segue to it. Just a huge thanks to the, you know, once again, to the Fire EMS department, to the chief, to the EMA and any volunteers that have been helping out with all the testing. It's been a huge task and a lot of hours that they've put in and, and taken away from their families to do the testing and we really appreciate it. So just wanted to say thanks to them again.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
All right, guys. Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I see Tom DeCosta. We do have a Veterans Memorial donation discussion here. If, if Mr. DeCosta has been sitting there patiently waiting with his American flag behind him. If we can go out of order here on the new business and we can jump right to the last one, number four. Welcome, Mr. DeCosta.
Let me unmute. Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right.
Welcome, Mr. DeCosta. You're here to have some conversation with the Board of Selectmen on some Veterans Memorial, the donations and, and where your fund stands and the status of all of that. You did, you did create a nonprofit, but I'll turn it over to you, Mr. DeCosta. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so some time ago, I created a nonprofit for the Veterans Memorial and we've been keeping that money there for a long time. And every year we have to file taxes and every year we pay to file those taxes. It doesn't cost money like, you know, when you owe tax money, but it does cost us money to file the taxes. So for the last year or two, I've been trying to figure out a way to unload the 501(c)(3) that we created for the Veterans Memorial. And so according to the accountant, the appropriate ways to find is, well, two ways, spend the money, which I don't want to do. And the other is to find another nonprofit organization such as the Town of Akushnet. And so I've been working for, you know, a little while to try and figure out a way to put that money in the hands of the town so that, so that if something breaks at the memorial, there's money there so it can be repaired. This money was given, I, I couldn't even imagine. To begin a list, this money was given in so many different ways, from motorcycle runs to concerts to t-shirt sales, sweatshirt sales, comedy nights, you name it, we did it, we had it. And we built the memorial based on the fact that we had so much in-kind volunteering as in construction itself or materials itself. And it goes on and on and on. And the money comes from all over the South Coast, even some of the south, on the South Shore. So, and actually, I mean, I had people, you know, requesting a t-shirt from California, you know? So this goes back quite a ways and the money comes from all over the place and it's for the town, for the memorial. So I wanted to put it in the hands of somewhere, somehow that we could make sure that it's protected properly. And so working with Julie and Lisa and Dave and, you know, the selectmen, we, I think we've come up with the best idea and that is, and, you know, pardon me for using the wrong term, but basically a line item in the VSO budget. If that's where, if that were correct, Julie, is it a line item?
So it would be, the veterans agent has a gift account, a veterans gift account. So the money would be deposited in there and the veterans agent has control over any money that would be spent from there. So he would be able to ma, maintain, you know, the area. If there's any maintenance that needs to happen, he could use the funds from that grant account. And then also if there are new stones that people want to purchase and put the engrave it on, he would be able to deposit that money into there and use the money from the gift account to, to pay for that. So it's kind of like a, a way to keep it revolving.
So that's, so that's the second half of everything. So if that, if I'm able to tran, transfer that money so that, you know, Julie knows where it's going, I'm not a hundred percent. But there's also some, some three thousand dollars, I believe, or something close to it, or just over three thousand dollars that was raised quite a while ago that could be combined with it. And it, that the town has held for some, some time now. So that money, if all of that money were put together and then in the VSO's Veteran Service Officer, for those of you who don't know what a VSO is, a Veteran Service Officer would handle the responsibilities. Now, I spoke to Ron Commier and he was happy to do that. And hopefully future VSOs would be happy to do that also. I would think they would be, being at it's a Veterans Memorial. So now what Julie alluded to was the fact that we sell bricks and pardon me for not having all of the information, but I, I would say this year we probably raised eighteen hundred dollars in brick sales. That taken, you know, like we, we sell them for fifty dollars a brick and we get about thirty dollars per brick. So we sold about sixty of them and that seems to happen every year and I do it just without any effort whatsoever. I post on Facebook, hey, you know, you can buy a brick. And the next thing you know, I've sold ten, twenty, ten, twenty, and it goes throughout the year. And I just dropped in the last five of them. So somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty. So that's eighteen hundred dollars. We could just add into that. I don't know what it would be going forward. But it, you know, it's basically thirty-two dollars a brick. So now, prior to all of this funding and where it would go, I spoke to the town clerk, Ms. Labonte, and she agreed that she could run the brick purchasing portion of it. She can't take the money in, if I understand that correctly. And, and everybody seemed to be okay with that, that the money would go to the, I guess, the collector's office. And, and that would all pass through properly. And as Julie said, we could add to that fund a little bit, throw a little bit more money in there. And when something needs to be done, something breaks, something needs to be repaired, the money's there or some money's there anyway to help out. So, and, and what I found is, you know, I can't even begin to tell you. What I found is, let's say, let's say we need new lighting, something broke with the lighting, that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have the money hopefully to buy the lighting and there'll always be someone who's willing to do the work for free and install it, you know, that type of thing. We can always find someone who'll do the work in kind for the Veterans Memorial. So that money, even though it's ten thousand dollars, let's say, or less, can go a long, long way just by the fact that someone's willing to do the volunteer work. So, I mean, you know, something goes wrong with the sprinklers, mag, irrigation donated everything. I can't, you know, I mean, everything. We're talking, I don't know, fifty some odd sprinkler heads, the whole, the whole thing. So if we need a sprinkler, we pay for a sprinkler, I'm sure that, you know, there's a sprinkler organization out there that's willing to just swap it out for us and, you know, not going to charge us. So it, it works out well. I think that's everything I got.
Is Julie, is that the only, that, that fund, that special line item that we're talking about? There's no other funds in there so we don't start commingling the funds from the Veterans Memorial into a different fund where they, you know, the expenditures are being taken and, you know, maybe buying a memorial or doing something else somewhere else. And Mr. DeCosta, is, is that your goal? Is whatever money that is placed into this line item, it's only to be spent on the Veterans Memorial and not elsewhere?
Yeah, I mean, the money was given to us for that reason, to build the memorial so to upkeep it. You know, I think we should, you know, honor the people that gave it. And trust me, some of the, some of the, some people that donated were giving me money that they really couldn't afford to give me to build that memorial. It brings me to tears to think of the people who gave me money, knowing that, you know, that, that, that week was going to be, they were going to be short on funds for groceries. So, and, and, and again, we chose fifty dollars a brick. We sold over six hundred bricks and we could have charged far more. I, whenever I see bricks being sold like that, they're in the hundreds, minimums one hundred. But the committee, you know, got together as a group, not, not me, that, you know, I left it up to them. I said, what should we charge? And they said seventy-five bucks sounds like grocery money for the week for, for a person who was wanting to buy a brick for their spouse. So they said, let's call it fifty dollars. So, you know, that's a lot of money. We raised over eighteen thousand dollars. Almost twenty grand actually is what we raised, is six hundred and some odd bricks. It was the largest fundraiser we had. So this, there could be a lot of money there and it still keeps coming in. So.
All right.
Yeah, if we could just do that, that'd be great.
I'm all on board. Mr. DeRoche?
Well, Tom, I can't say enough about the effort that you probably started twelve years ago now, that you spearheaded and all the volunteers who cooperated and worked together to create the fine memorial that we have at Pollock Park. I think it's really great that you're donating this money to the town, to the veterans gift account and that the VSO will be in charge of that and, and distributed it, I'm sure, accordingly to our wishes in the future. And as you mentioned, bricks will be handled by the town clerk and the money at the town collector. So, you know, I just have to say thank you. Thank you for your efforts over this whole twelve years. You know, and I'm glad we were able to wrap it up in a, in a very good way.
I appreciate it. Trust me. It'd be nice to get it off the table.
Yeah, Julie, how, how quick can we, how quick can we do that? Because the calendar year, Tom's talking about taxes. I think he's trying to get to, this is my last year of doing taxes. So can we get that money from him and do that paperwork, whatever needs to be done? So Mrs. DeCosta can have that for his tax records and we can get that transfer of, let's call it transfer of title and funds over to the Town of Akushnet?
Yeah, so essentially that's what you guys would be voting to accept the money from him as a gift to the town for the Veterans Memorial. And then it would just be, you know, we'll get the check from him and, and he'll get a receipt. It'll be good.
Yep. Mr. DeCosta, do you have a total number so I can include that in the motion?
Yeah, I believe it's six thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Last time I cut the check, I left a penny in the account just in case. I'm not going to do it this time. You can't give me the money back. Last time I put it in, I gave it to the town. They were like, oh, this isn't right. We need to redo this. So that was fine. I didn't want to do anything wrong, but this time the account's going to be closed. So you'll get it all.
Very good. Very good. Excellent. Julie, do you want it, you want a motion tonight or do we want to make sure we have the proper motion for the next meeting or?
No, you can make the motion tonight. It's just a motion to accept the, the gift and that amount.
Is there a motion to accept the money from the Veterans Memorial Gift Fund 501(c)(3) or whatever Mr. DeCosta has there to transfer it to the Akushnet's Veterans Budget?
Well, I'm, yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the six thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents from the Veterans 501(c) to the Veterans Gift Account.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tommy, as always, thank you very much for everything you did with that memorial. It's, I don't think the Town of Akushnet can repay you. So thank you.
You don't have to. Thank you. I appreciate everything you guys did. And if I could, two seconds, lots of park commissioners went through there over that twelve years that Dave was talking about. It's actually fourteen. Lots of selectmen, Dave, Mr. Walnar, he, he was on there from the beginning and then he went away and he raised a couple of kids that went to play some baseball and came back. And so that, you know, Kevin's been there the last ten years, whatever. You've got a lot of selectmen, a lot of park commissioners, a lot of people in the town just supported that. And so I thank them very much. Thank you. Appreciate it and have a good night.
All right, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Surplus property, desk and file cabinets. Gentlemen, Mr. Merritt's done some work going around the buildings and clearing out some of our surplus stuff because he's got rooms with excess file cabinets, mostly file cabinets. He's got a list here in front of us, two draw filing cabinets, four draw filing cabinets, a few desks, couple tables, couple chairs. Most of the equipment has been worn and has little value. We're putting a ten dollar, price of ten dollar on any single item and happy to see it go. He goes on to talk about one in the basement, all the board of selectmen need to do. I think what we're going to do, Julie, in our conversation is we're going to post this on the website as surplus equipment. Ten buck minimum bid. You'll have, open it up for like thirty days or so. People go on our town's website if they're interested in making a purchase. Mr. Merritt did put some pictures already. I know there's a packet he had left for me of a bunch of different file cabinets, a couple of desks, things of that nature. Not in bad shape. If you're looking for some used file cabinets and desks, you can go online. I believe Julie, Mr., either you or Mr. Merritt will post this on our webpage. People can bid on it. Gentlemen, thirty days, end of the year, whatever the board's preference is, they'll post it up there. How soon can we get it, Julie, up there?
I could probably do it tomorrow.
Okay. So gentlemen, you want to run it through the end of the calendar year?
You've Yeah. Guys, I would suggest, you know, Julie, get somebody to post it on All Things Akushnet, maybe. Let them know about it that way. And worst case, if we can't move it, I would take it down to the swap shop at the DPW. There's a lot of activity there. I've dropped some stuff off there and I think it's a great resource for people. So, you know, I don't know. It's nice that we're charging ten bucks, but you know what? Somebody can get it for whatever, as long as it can go to you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Once, once we, once we post this thing, Julie, selectmen, Mona hit the nail right on the head. We don't get rid of it. Over to the swap shop. I dropped off a kitchen table set and I went back there the following week and that was gone. So I agree, things fly out of there pretty, pretty quick. People are looking to repurpose things. And, or some people go there actually and buy stuff, take stuff and sell it at yard sale. So however we get rid of it is great. And if we can help out people make a few extra bucks, that's great too, or save a few bucks buying it. So gentlemen, we have a list of condition codes for the sake of the meeting. I think we have to at least give it an condition code in zero three works out pretty well. Used property, which is still in fair condition and usable without repairs. However, somewhat deteriorated with some parts or portions worn and which should be replaced. And as a, as a resolution to declare items as surplus property, whereas the Town of Akushnet has the authority to declare items as surplus property and no longer deemed necessary or adequate to properly perform the duties of government and prescribed by law. And whereas the Town of Akushnet, the town requests approval from the Board of Selectmen to declare the attached list of items as surplus property and property dispose of them. Now therefore, be it Now therefore be it resolved by the board of selectmen, the town of Acushnet meeting in regular session this day, or seventeenth day of November, that this board hereby approves the disposal of the attached list of surplus property. And it's a, just a little sheet for us to sign when you gentlemen come by the office. Um, I think we've done all that, right, Miss Ebert? We vote to make this surplus and put it out there. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And, uh, cable purchase is, it looks like the cable from Nick Monticello and the cable guys, the cable department would like to put forward a request to purchase the below item from GovConnection. The list, the price is three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. However, they say they spoke with Chris. Um, assuming that's Chris Oliver from the school department, technology guy. He said his quote would be for around thirty-one hundred bucks. The current computer is starting to run slow, overheated, freeze at times, requiring a forced reboot. It's going on four years old. It's a workhorse behind the entire production process for meetings and videos. Um, is there a motion to approve? Julie, are we doing the thirty-one hundred bucks? Are we sure about?
That what the number is? Yeah.
I mean, I, I would go a little higher just in case, like up to thirty-five hundred maybe.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve, um, for this piece of equipment? Uh, and the amount of thirty-five, not to exceed the amount of thirty-five hundred bucks?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then it looks like there's a second piece in the amount of twelve hundred and ninety-five dollars. Chris Oliver, um, it's a, it's a, I don't know, a hello recording streaming appliance. This gentleman, Miss Ebert and I had a, had a conversation, quick conversation about this. It's for streaming, um, I think the meetings from the school committee live right to the internet, to YouTube and stuff like that. I just asked her to look up and see if this would be an approved expenditure because it's not cable related. At least I don't believe so. So Julie, have you found any, anything out with Chris Oliver saying, you know, anything indifferent? Or can we expend this money for this device that's twelve, thirteen hundred bucks? Don't want to make a big deal out of it. I just want to make sure that when we expend money for capital improvements in the cable vision fund, it's be, it's cable related.
Yeah, it's still a great, it's like, it's a great area. So the money from cable can be used to support cable peg access service or programming. Um, I mean, it's, it, it's, it's a great area. I haven't gotten definitive, um, information yet. I can put this off for the next meeting and talk to the school in the meantime because it, it's not a lot of money. Um, if the school really needs it, it might be something that they could, they could, uh, afford in their own budget where we don't have to worry about.
Because, I mean, you could create the argument. I don't know. You know the CARES stuff better than I do. But perhaps because people can't go to the meetings, uh, because of the pandemic and we've got these restrictions, we've got to step up our, um, you know, our communication game through YouTube and all these other things. So maybe there's some
Yeah.
CARES Act money. And I would speak with Chris Oliver, uh, and the whole cable production team to see if we can utilize, if it's an, you know, if it's a, an allowable fund, is there's anything that we can do to really, uh, increase broadband drops, whatever it is to, uh, to put our, uh, cable game on, uh, steroids. I think now would be the time to do it because of, uh, lack of access. You know, looking at satellite places to have meetings if we have to have overflow crowds and all that stuff. Because I just can't get it any better. And we've got access CARES funding out there.
Yeah, you could use CARES for this.
Well, yeah, you know, if, if it's, it's short money, if there's somewhere we can get it from, I'm, I'm not gonna debate Chris Oliver on.
Yeah, no.
The new equipment. And I know we all agree on that. I mean, in the, I guess if we just have to cross the Ts and dot the Is, exactly what account it's coming out of, well, then I think we should just do that and, uh, provide the service or the equipment that he needs.
I think selectman won't, I hit the nail on the head right there, right? CARES Act money, bang, done. Julie?
Is that, is that a vote?
Yeah.
I'm not involved for a act.
I mean, is there a motion to, uh, take the thirteen hundred dollars out of CARES Act money for that piece of equipment for school department?
Yeah, some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, chapter ninety approval for the paver and burn machine. Gentlemen, we've already approved this. Julie, are you just?
Yeah, it, it's, it's, you guys have already approved it. It's just a matter of, um, the final report came back. Um, and the selectmen need to sign off on this in order, um, for the DPW to give it to Maskeot and have the money reimbursed.
So. Because, uh, just, just as a comment, I already signed off on it and we paid for it. So, uh, you know, we should follow through and, and get this, uh.
I think I signed it too.
Okay, yeah. Well, I noticed the two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar bill and, um, that caught my attention. So, uh.
Yeah, it's been approved. It's just a matter of, um, technicality. The board of selectmen have to sign off on the final report. So that's why we wanted it on the agenda to be discussed.
Then that's correct. And this is something we approved, uh, two meetings ago.
Julie?
Yeah.
Can you just contact Kathy from the DPW and see what happened? I think when we, I don't know if those, uh, reimbursements at that company where we bought it from Ambrose up in New Hampshire, they said something about waiving the rental fees for the asphalt paving machine and the burn machine. And I don't see that deduction. Whether or not that's encapsulated somewhere else in the invoices, I don't know. But can you check into that?
Yeah.
I know, I know when we talk, I probably have it somewhere, Julie, but we talked about the paving machine, two twenty-one. I think that was somewhere around seven grand. So, I mean, it's, it's not insignificant money. Can we just check on that and see what happened to that? I think that was, that was part of the discussion when the board was approving it.
It was exactly, that's exactly right.
So let's check on that and make sure we're getting that money. Um, and these are real. This is a real number that we're submitting for chapter ninety funds.
Okay.
Thank you. Gentlemen, uh, I don't, so town administrators report, Miss Hebert?
Okay. Um, alright, so I have, um, the winter shared streets and spaces grant. Um, I wanted to just mention this quickly. I've talked to you all offline about it. Uh, but just so the public knows, we already had, um, they didn't call it this, just the, the shared streets and spaces grant in, in the summer and in the fall. Um, we received money about thirteen thousand dollars. And that's what we, um, redid the Acushnet River View Park. The DPW did a great job, um, adding in the bike slash walk, walking paths um, over there. And, um, it was, it was an initial grant that now the state has said we're gonna put it out again. And they're doing it as a winter, a winter grant. Um, I know there's a lot that we've talked about doing in the past. Um, we do have a little bit more time with this grant. Um, all of the work needs to be completed by the end of May. So we have a little bit more time than we did when we looked at it in the summer. Um, and so I just wanted to keep that on your radar. Um, you know, this, the state is also looking at um, people using this money to help the local businesses, um, help bring in, um, a lot of, you know, as much economic recovery as we can for our, um, town. So I do have a, a little focus group, um, some people in, um, various departments. Then hopefully opening it up to, um, people in town if anyone has interest. Just trying to see if there's some, something we can come up to, um, help our local businesses, um, you know, bring people to Acushnet. Uh, there's been a lot that the state has circulated and I, again, shared with the selectmen. Um, and I'm not sure that anything, everything is, um, something that would be helpful for the town of Acushnet. But we're looking at a lot of different options. If we can do something to bring people to Acushnet and then they, you know, go and spend time in our restaurants or any of our local businesses and, and help, help them out. Um, that's a win for us. So, uh, we're gonna be working on some ideas for the selectmen, um, to apply for this money. Um, as you said earlier, we do have CARES money that's still remaining. And, and if there is any remaining, then we can use it for this project as well. That would be great. Um, but just to share with the townspeople and the selectmen that, you know, we're, we're looking at a lot of different avenues to try to, um, you know, do whatever we can to support the, the community here.
Gentlemen, the only thing, the only thing, I mean, outside of any other brainstorming, everybody's more than welcome. But again, um, the last time we talked about these Locum Street sidewalks, um, the amount that we could only expend, I think, went up to thirty thousand dollars, um, and the timeframe was like within three or four weeks. Selectman Wonar, you, you utilize and capitalize on that opportunity for Down by the River Park. Um, it goes up to three hundred thousand bucks until May first. So if we could put in for the sidewalks on Slocom Street, um, those sidewalks are in dire need of attention. Um, I think that'd be a great project for us to take on and hopefully be able to, uh, finally accomplish for those residents and, and everybody walking those sidewalks. I mean, they're, they're, they're really becoming a safety issue. So, um, I wouldn't, I'm, I'm all, I, I'm endorsing that sidewalk, uh, project a hundred percent. Um, if we can get that money, that'd be great. But that would be my top priority, um, for the, for the town anyway, and anywhere in that main street corridor or anywhere else. Um, you know, as Miss Hebert said, the public's more than welcome to call and share their ideas. And, um, if anybody talks to a restaurant or, or business owners all down the strip here or wherever, and they have some ideas that they'd like to, uh, share with members of the board or, or, uh, at least Miss Leonard, she's still on, on the Zoom meeting right now. Call the selectman's office and share your ideas with Miss Leonard and she'll pass them on when, to Miss Hebert and whatever that little informal committee is that we got going on. Um, it's great stuff. If we can do something, great. If we can't. But I'd, I'd like to, uh, see what we can do about these sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, you just made a good point. Did the, a couple of meetings ago, we voted to waive the liquor license fees for our, you know, bars and restaurants in town. Has that, that, has that letter gone out yet?
Yeah, it did. I've, I've heard from, uh, well, I frequent the Blue Point and, uh, I was thanked there for our, uh, decision to, um, you know, to bypass, um, the fees this year.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, like if we're gonna do some of these by Zoom, you know, maybe we, at a meeting, we just send a, you know, a, a note to try to get ahold of some of the businesses in town, the, you know, the bars and restaurants and have them log in and just, you know, take five or six minutes to hear from them on what's important to them. You know, it could be just, you know, one fell swoop and utilize the technology that we have. Um, and then this way we can do something that way, you know? Just a thought.
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity out here. I've read what Julie sent over to us. And, uh, you know, there's some monies out there to be taken and, um, you know, hopefully we can acquire some of it and, uh, you know, clean up our areas and improve upon what we have.
Yeah.
Yep. I also talked to a couple of restaurants and they called and wanted to say thank you to everybody just for thinking of them and doing that for them. So.
Yep, it's gone over pretty well. Um, I've heard from a few of them, not all of them, but obviously I'm not in every establishment. Um, frequently, especially with COVID nineteen unfortunately, but I outpassed through a couple of them and spoke to a couple of them via um, text message or phone and, and it was greatly appreciated. So, um, they weren't expecting it. The board of selectmen did it. Um, they're very, they're very happy to see that. And I think anytime that we can help each other out, um, and, and making lives a little bit easier and a little bit better, that's, that's the ultimate goal. Gentlemen, um, anything? Miss Hebert, you don't have anything else?
Um, I did just want to quickly mention, um, I usually mention grants to be received. And, um, at the end of October, we did receive a seven hundred and fifty dollar grant. Um, the DPW has been applying for this last few years. Um, it's the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, um, essentially used for, you know, recycling. And, um, it's only seven hundred and fifty dollars, but every dollar, you know, counts, especially in this economic, uh, you know, environment. So, um, thank you to the DPW and congratulations on getting this grant. And, um, hopefully we can do a lot of good with it. But that was all I had.
Alright, gentlemen, anything?
I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman, we got two things. Um, as we, uh, either before the end of the year or right after the new year, I think it would be great if we heard from, uh, our finance team, you know, from Julie and our finance director on just what the state of the finances are for the town. You know, like today we heard we just got a bunch of new growth at town meeting. Most recently, we didn't spend, you know, I think it was like three hundred grand, close to three hundred grand that we did, that we thought we were gonna spend, but we didn't spend. Um, I'd like to hear from the golf course to see how they made out. I think it would just be a really good tone setter, uh, to start the year as we go into the budget process. So maybe it's a reminder to do this after the first of the year, uh, when, to really set the tone for our budget process. Um, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I, 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 I agree, selectman Wonar. I said that before. I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, if you have that big pool of money, what's everybody's looking at going, oh, look at all the money. And then the next year you don't have all that money and things of that nature. So kinda gotta tone that down and, uh, put everything in perspective because we carried over some money, free cash from last year. Um, so yeah, we have to have that discussion and, you know, we all have to be frugal in our spending. So Mr. DeRoche, you got, you don't have anything? Selectman Wonar, you all done?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, to you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. DeRoche, uh, I want to say thank you. Uh, it's been great to be back. It's only been a few months, uh, back on the board and back in the saddle, but I do really appreciate working with the both, with both of you. It's great to see the, uh, you have great interest, uh, you know, the townspeople at heart. And it's, uh, it's really gratifying and, and well worth the effort and to Julie and to Lisa for all the support you provide us. So thank you all and to the residents of Acushnet. Have a great Thanksgiving. Hope everybody stays safe.
There you go. We stole my line. So happy Thanksgiving to all. Be safe and enjoy the holiday. And, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.